Our Wilmington School Committee meeting of October 12th. And the first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in addressing the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The next item of business is our consent agenda. And we have four items on our consent agenda this evening. The first two will take together the approval of minutes from August 24th, our workshop, and September 28th, regular session. Can I have a motion to approve these two minutes? Mr. Bjork? Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Thank you. The next item on our consent agenda is a February 16th, 2018, high school field trip to Cuba. And I believe, Mr. Gallagher, do you have any extra information about the field trip to Cuba?
I do. It seems like it's a well-planned trip, you know, going through the forms and the documents. I think this group has traveled across the seas before. But I don't have any further.
Any questions on the field trip to Cuba? Mr. Talbot?
I actually have a bunch of questions about it. So what students will this be available to? Is it just seniors, juniors, or what's the age groups?
They have a number of students on the form is 20 to 24 students they're anticipating. And I believe it's the upper levels, mainly juniors and seniors, but it does have, I think, all grades. But I think they're kind of targeting the upper levels. But they are opening up for all four grades. I'm not sure, did you all receive a copy of the field trip? And they have three chaperones. And it's, you know, they kind of run it through a travel agency. And it kind of details kind of where they're going to be going. So right now, I think they, typically what happens for the exchange trips is you open it up for grades nine to 11, you kind of target the upper levels. You anticipate hopefully around 20 students. And then usually, you know, you'll include freshmen and sophomores really to kind of like fill, fill the seats if it's available. But typically on exchange trips, it's usually the upper level grades.
Now, what if not enough kids sign up for it?
Then you would probably, you know, postpone, kind of reorganize, and kind of look at like a trip for the following year, which it does happen sometimes. They, you plan the trip so well ahead, and then the students, you know, for whatever reason, aren't ready or they don't sign up. And so you kind of just put it on, you know, table it for another year, and then build the interest up.
I've seen that this particular company has had some issues with refunding money for canceled reasons, whether it's individually or as a, as a whole. And, you know, I've seen the cost be several hundreds of dollars, if not more, if a student, you know, at the last minute can't go, or if not enough students. And then a lot of other times, they actually pair the groups with other schools.
Right. I think that's a great question. I remember, you know, the way the times are, especially overseas with, with some of the incidents that happened, you know, with terrorism. And I'm sure Linda Peters knows too. So we looked into that, like, so if Homeland Security banned all trips and all of that, the reimbursement portion of a trip like this would, it's probably between like $300 and $400. And that's only if, you know, like Homeland Security or someone stepped in. For a student that decides to sign up and commits to that, a student or family, that's kind of the, the catch-22. If something happens, they may not be able to get reimbursed for the cost. So that's why I think when you set those meetings with parents and families, and you kind of explain all of that to the families, that's, you know, so when you, when you open this up, you'll have 40 students, "Oh, you know, I want to go to Cuba." And then you have the meeting, and then the 40 turns into 20. And then you start to look at, you know, reimbursement and the cost and, and then, so it could dwindle down where you postpone it for a year and it may not go through. But I think typically for this and to follow school committee policy, you do it all upfront first, and then you, you go through the process.
Yeah, I mean, just the reimbursement, I, I hope, you know, that cancellation policies, you really kind of hit that heavy and hard because it, it's, you know, $3,400, $3,500. And to lose out on possibly even more than that, you know, is, is quite, make a huge dent.
I, I agree.
The other questions I had was, will any parents be going, will be available for a parent to go on a trip?
I think for the overnight trips, it's usually chaperoned by school employees and teachers. Like I know, for example, you know, in the past, if there's an opportunity for parent chaperoning, like if it was a music trip or a band trip, sometimes parents in the overnights help out. But for this one, it's, you know, for what they have listed for chaperones, it's three teachers.
Yeah. The only reason why I say that is because in the Explica's Code of Conduct under C, it says, "Consumption of hard alcohol will not be tolerated. We do not permit excessive drinking on our trips. Allowance of glass of wine or beer at meals is up to the discretion of the group leader if you're over 18 or of legal drinking age in the country you are visiting."
Yeah.
Now, in Cuba, it's 16.
Right.
And it's, it's kind of loose on that.
I mean, I would recommend for the committee, but typically, my past experience is you follow, if you're on a school event, you follow all school rules regardless if you're 18. So any type of alcohol beverage or any of that type of stuff, I think, you know, school committee, I'm not sure what the, your policies are on that, but I would recommend that follow all school-sponsored events, no tobacco, drug, you know, same type of stuff. And if there is an incident of drinking, then when the students come back, you follow through the due process of, you know, dealing with that.
And so there'll be tour guides that will be showing the different Trinidad and Cuba. Are they, are they subject to Cory-type checks? I mean, I know that they're-
Well, I think that that's, when you're, when they, you, you have your teacher chaperones, and they're part of those groups. Typically, and this, you know, I'm new to Wilmington, but typically, especially when you're going overseas, it's, and you're doing a lot of the tours or museums, you don't, they, they usually stay together, you know, the three chaperones with, you know, the 20 students. Very seldom are the, the kids off and doing, you know, especially when you go overseas, the supervision has to be elevated. And these are all like questions we can follow back with the faculty to make sure.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I, I've had some people that I know that just came back from Cuba, and it was a bit of a culture shock because of the conditions.
Right.
There right now are not optimal, we'll say. And so, you know, with the laws and that it's different, that, you know, I hope that we're going to really hammer in to our kids that these laws, the countries are different, they can do whatever they want. And doesn't mean mommy and daddy can, can bail you out so quickly and easily.
I agree. I agree. So I think that some of those expectations have to be, you know, laid out. You could always, you know, table this for the, to the next meeting if you want more information regarding the supervision aspect and, and that type of stuff. It's always in your, you know, best interest, you could bring the teachers in and ask them questions too.
Yeah, I just, just had a few, few questions.
No, I, I, they're great questions, you know, and as you said, Cuba just opened, pretty much opened their country up recently, so it's not, you'd probably be more, we're more familiar with, you know, Italy, France, Germany. Cuba is a, it's a new, a new area, so there is no, there's valid questions there.
Mrs. Kane?
I just, I may have missed it. Was there a request here for the students, well, everybody on the trip to have traveler's insurance?
I think, you know, I think part, yeah, I think part of the, the package, they have that built in, like travelers' insurance, opportunities for reimbursement on-
I've read into that, and it doesn't really cover a lot.
It's not going to cover a lot. I agree.
It's, it's almost not worth even getting it because what they, what you would really want it for, the insurance doesn't really-
And that's, just from my past experience, when, when we had some overseas trips, we had a trip going to Germany, we also had one going to France during some, some of that turmoil, and we were considering banning traveling, but you know, when you followed up with the, you know, the what-if questions, you know, what if we cancel? How much will the families get back? How much does the flight insurance and all that? And then, and then if the government canceled all foreign trips, so you would imagine that you'd get a large portion of that funding back, and you didn't, and you don't. So that's why I think it's really important for the families and the students that commit to an overseas trip, to really have all the details and really understand what, you know, a $3,000, a $2,500 trip, and all of a sudden, you, you don't want to go. It's, you know, once you're locked in, you're pretty much locked in.
Mr. Mullis?
Thanks. Mr. Talbot brings up some, some concerns and some pretty valid ones regarding tour guides and the company itself. My concern is really, you know, Cuba just opened up, so do we know of any schools in the area or even within the state that has taken a trip to Cuba that we can get some feedback from or at least know, especially if they use this company?
Right. I, I think that's a great question, and something that we can look, you know, follow up on to look into.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on this until we, we would hear another school has gone and get some, some information on the experience. Because, you know, we've sent students to Europe, and we've sent them to other countries and-
Correct.
But this is, this is really new. We don't have any experience or any, any knowledge of how it works. So I'd be curious to, to find out if any, if any schools or any districts locally or even within the state have taken a tour to Cuba with the students.
Yep.
Mr. Bjork?
I think that this trip was organized and approved before Sean began his, his tenure with us. I see Mrs. Peters in the, in the audience. I don't know, do you have anything that you want to contribute, or has Sean taken?
I, I think you have valid concerns that I probably wouldn't have thought about, and I think that maybe we should investigate a little bit further, if you don't mind tabling it. I think it's a great opportunity, but maybe we should look into it just a little bit further.
Have it.
Okay. I'll take a motion to table this until our next meeting. Mr. Talbot? Mrs. Kane, second. All those in favor? Okay, so we're going to move this to our next meeting, which would be October 26th, and then maybe perhaps we can invite Mrs. Peters, maybe the teachers that are the organizers to give us a little more information at that point. Okay? Thank you. All right, our next item on the list for items by consensus is one warrant, and that's LO-8. That's a local warrant, so that seems like very little. Usually we have a whole list. Mrs. Bonish, motion please. Thank you. A second. Mrs. Kane, thank you. All those in favor? Great, thank you. Alrighty, this is the place in our agenda where we normally have a superintendent report. In place of that this evening, I'd like to say a few words as our chairperson. I acknowledge that the last few weeks have been very challenging for our school community. The Wilmington School Committee has done our very best to be as transparent as legally possible. To my colleagues on this board, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of you. You've handled some difficult situations with respect, dignity, and professionalism. Muni, Steve, Ginny, Peggy, and Tom, and MJ, who can't be with us tonight, I say thank you. To our dedicated staff, teachers, and administrators, you've had to pick up quite a bit and be under quite a bit of stress yourselves, so I'd like to say thank you very much as well. To the greater community of Wilmington, please remember that while these individuals seated beside me are elected officials, the Wilmington School Committee members are volunteers. It may surprise you, but we receive no pay or stipend for the work we do. Our children and grandchildren attend Wilmington Public Schools. Members of this committee have given countless hours in service to our town. We do this job because we care about all the children of Wilmington and are passionate about public education. We give our time because we believe in community service. Thank you. Okay, we have a new student representative that I'm very excited to introduce. We have Ashley Burnett Kim with us tonight, who has a few words to share with us.
Good evening. My name is Ashley. I'm a senior here at Wilmington High School, and I will be serving as the student representative for you. The 2016 to 2017 school year has started off on a great foot and has the prospects of being the best school year yet. We started off this year with the homecoming dance, which took place on September 16th. From there, we began to introduce the freshmen to new opportunities for them to get involved with many programs in the school, as well as showcasing what students in Wilmington High School are passionate about through the ice cream social, which took place on September 16th. Something new that you might see around this school is the freshmen, which are continuously working on new Chromebooks. This is the school just encouraging more educational technology in order to better manage classwork, as well as to increase the scope of what is possible within the classroom. In the next month, there are many exciting opportunities for students. The annual Mr. and Mrs. WHS is coming up on October 19th, as well as the grade eight open house on the 20th. The middle of our first quarter was on the 7th, with the quarter ending on November 3rd, just as seniors are completing applications for the number, for November 1st college deadlines. Yeah, that's coming up a lot faster than we would have thought. And that's all I have to report so far, so thank you so much.
Great, thank you for joining us. We'll look forward to your reports each meeting. Thank you. Okay. And I usually say to our student representative that we know you have homework, so you're welcome to leave as you are able. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay, moving on, under old business, I don't believe we have any old business to attend to this evening. Under new business, we have one item, item letter E, that was district library and media presentation. Unfortunately, our presenters are unable to be here this evening, so I'm going to ask for a motion to push that to our next meeting. Mr. Mullis?
Second.
Mrs. Kane? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, and the rest, I think we are all set for. So first on the list, this is a great one. This is the Mass Academic Excellence Award, and I believe Mr. Gallagher has a few words to say.
Do we usually stay in this area, or we?
Maybe you can.
Yeah. Wherever you want to go.
If you don't mind, I don't, I have to move around a much, you know? Active learner here.
Well, first of all-
TV's going to have to pull out the boot.
That's right. Yeah, it's like Phil Donahue. Well, first of all, this is a, a great honor, and, and I also want to thank everybody, you know, throughout the district, teachers, support staff, everyone's really rallied together and just supportive one another. And tonight is what it's all about, right? It's about recognizing great students. So Cecilia Chase is being recognized for being academically gifted, a student enjoys learning and seeking out challenges. She's enrolled in the most challenging curriculum here at Wilmington High School in terms of honors and AP classes. She's a top-five simple average student for the class of 2017. Her academic excellence awards are in math, science, foreign language, and is a member of the National Honor Society. She's also received a bronze medal on the national Spanish exam for her sophomore year. Cecilia's a recipient of the Bartolome Honorary Science Award, the University of Rochester and the Harvard Book Award. Outside of the classroom, Cecilia's the captain of the varsity soccer team. And she's also a leader who's dedicated to helping others. She demonstrates that through community service, as a student mentor, a soccer coach for young athletes with disabilities, and is a member of the Best Buddies Club, a club that provides social opportunities for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So with all of those great accolades and just knowing people like you, what's, I think, your everlasting legacy, because a lot of these great awards, people will forget, but what they're not going to forget is the type of role model you are, your peers that look up to you, the middle school, the elementary students who see you, getting all these great recognitions, and we're extremely, extremely proud of you. And proud, proud for your parents too. It's a great thing, so come on up and receive your award. Congratulations. All right. Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right.
She's got a good camera. We have to take her picture.
I'll take a picture.
Oh, okay. Ready for you?
Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you so much. Let's see if I can do this well, put my fingers in it. Thank you so much. Do one this way, too. Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, I've asked Mr. Paul Regirio to present the Fiscal Year 17 Financial Status Report.
Thank you. FY '17, our budget was $37,645,645,468. We spent and encumbered as of October 4th, $34,458,957. So currently, we have an unencumbered, unexpended balance of $3,186,511. Now, that will get eaten up over the rest of the course of the year, but this is where we stand as of October 4th. I do owe you an FY '16 final report that we are working on, and a lot of this work in the audience is Jackie Rafferty, who's my right and left hand person, so she's been doing yeoman's work on, on this. So we will get you an FY '16 as well, but this just gives you an idea of where we stand currently for FY '17. I do have two motions as well.
Any questions or comments? Actually, let's take the, the first two motions and then I'll, we've got two motions that we need to make on here. The first, allow the Director of Administration and Finance to move budgeted funds from the salary adjustment line to the proper line items to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases. Mrs. Bonish, second. Mrs. Kane, second. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, as we go through the budgeting process, sometimes there's union contracts that are settled at the time we do the budget, and there's also some other contractual increases, lane changes, for instance, where teachers move from, you know, bachelor's 15 to masters that we don't know about when we're going through the, the budgeting process. So we have a salary adjustment line, where we budget a certain fund, so now we're just asking to move the money out of that salary adjustment line to put it in the proper line items in the budget, you know, a certain teacher line item, like English teachers at the high school, for instance, something like that. So we just move the money around.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on the first motion? Okay, so I think we can take a vote on the first motion, allowing the Director of Administration and Finance to move budgeted funds from the salary adjustment line to the proper line items to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases. All those in favor? I think we've got unanimous there, Kim. Okay, the second motion, allow the Director of Administration and Finance to distribute the circuit breaker offset to the appropriate special education tuition lines. Mrs. Kane?
So moved.
So moved, second. Mr. Talbot? Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, we should take a vote. All those in favor? Great, that's unanimous, Kim. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Gallagher, you're up again for the MCAS results.
All right. I would recommend if we could take maybe a minute, two-minute recess, so we had the technical difficulties, and we're on Plan B.
Absolutely, okay. Could I have a motion to take a two-minute recess? Mr. Talbot? Mrs. Kane, the second?
We can move on. We can move on. Okay, we can move on. So our, we're going to jump to, what is it? Item D, the MASC resolutions. So you see before you in the packet, there's the four resolutions. These are the four items that the MASC is focused on for this year. At our last meeting, we voted, Mrs. Burns, to represent us at the annual meeting at MASC's conference. Resolution one has to do with the foundation budget. Resolution two is tax reform ballot question. Resolution three has to do with the charter school reform. Remember, we voted back in September that we were against lifting the cap on the ballot initiative. And resolution number four has to do with social and emotional well-being of students. So any comments or questions? On these four? Then I think what we can do is vote on them as a group.
Mrs. Kane?
I was going to vote no on one of them.
Oh, okay, then let's, let's take them in order then. The foundation budget, and it's, I can read the text of the resolution, but I think it's pretty clear for all of us. Resolution one, I'll make a motion to support resolution one? Oh, Mr. Bjork. This is like watching a tennis match. Mrs. Kane, okay. All of those in favor of the Wilmington School Committee supporting the MASC Resolution Number One regarding foundation budget, please signify by saying aye. Okay, that one's unanimous. Okay, resolution two, that's the tax reform ballot question, take a motion of support. Mr. Bjork?
So moved.
So moved, okay, second. Mrs. Bonish? Any discussion on this resolution? Mrs. Kane?
This is the one.
This is the one, okay, go ahead.
I, I thought this is kind of, there's a clear need to invest in our state's educational social infrastructures systems. And then it goes on about the roads and the bridges, and the, I'm assuming it's telling us where they're going to get this money to add to the school system. But they will not raise taxes on any but the wealthiest residents of Massachusetts. When you stop picking out groups like that, I just have a problem with it. And that's the part that I would have to say in my, the high-wage earners. You know, someday I might be one of those, who knows?
We can all hope.
We can all hope. I could win the lottery, but that's the reason I, I just don't, I don't like this one because of it pointing out that particular group of people.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this particular one?
I think I, you make a good point, Peggy.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts? No? Mr. Talbot? Mr. Mullis? No? Okay. Then we, as a school committee, could say that we do not support this particular one?
I thought we were voting on it.
Yes.
I, I support it.
You support it? Okay. All right. So how about a show of hands, all of those in favor of supporting resolution two? Mr. Mullis? Mrs. Bonish? Okay, we've got two. All those in favor of not supporting resolution two? We've got three. Four. Thank you. Resolution three, the charter school reform. Take a motion of support for the charter school reform? Mr. Bjork, okay. A second, Mrs. Bonish? Any discussion on the resolution number three, charter school reform? No? Okay.
You know what, can I ask?
You know what, can I ask, I do have one question.
Sure.
There's been so much propaganda out there about how that the reform will not take funding away from schools. Is there anyone that can speak to the validity of those claims?
That's a really good question. I know I personally can't.
Yeah, Paul. The last school committee meeting, when you approved the letter that we sent in, it talked about how much would be taken from public school system. Typically, the money falls to child. So if a child enrolls in a charter school, the money that would go to the public school falls that child to the charter school. So I'm not an expert in this, and I defer, but just if the money falls to child, then it would tell me that less money would go to the public schools than, you know, because that money's going to charter school.
That certainly is my assumption. I'm just curious about how they can make those claims.
Mrs. Kane?
I'd just say, too, I mean, what they're asking for here is, just would seem so obvious already, that establishment of strict guidelines, reporting of accurate numbers of students, to retain and report accurate data on enrollment, which is implying that that's not happening now. So that's why I think this is a really good resolution.
Any other questions or comments?
The only thing that kind of raised my awareness, too, is that the Lowell Sun, the Boston Globe, and the Herald, all three of them are, you know, saying, I believe it's yes to this, that to allow charter schools to expand, and that they're not taking away money from the schools. So, you know, and I know that, you know, if they don't go to a charter school, they're going to go to a private school, a Catholic school, or, you know, some other ones. I just don't know, you know, if it's something...
Mrs. Kane?
I think the difference is that at a private school or a Catholic school, the parents pay. We don't pay for that. The public doesn't pay for them to go to those schools. And I'd like to remind everyone, this is probably really fresh to say, but in the Lowell Sun recently, there were a number of misinformed comments about us and what's been going on. And so I just, I'd be wary, leery of using them as a source personally, but...
Any more discussion?
Haven't we already voted on this?
We voted on the whether or not to, let me make sure I'm saying this the right way.
Do not support the...
Right. So what, this is, this is a resolution that MASC is putting forth. I think Mr. Gilbert's in the audience. I might call on him. But I think this is, this is kind of the Plan B. So we have an election November eighth. If the voters support lifting the cap on charter schools, then this is the action that MASC is proposing we take. And I'm getting a head nod, so I said, I think I said it correctly. Okay. So this is kind of the Plan B, because we don't know what's going to happen yet at the election. We know what we did as a school committee and the communication that we put forth. But we don't know what the voters are going to do. Any more discussion on resolution three? No? If so, show of hands, all those that are in favor of supporting MASC's resolution number three, please show your support, raise your hand. I think we've got unanimous, Kim. Thank you. And the final resolution is resolution four, social and emotional well-being. I'll make a motion, I'll ask for a motion to support resolution four. Mr. Mullis, I saw your hand first. Mrs. Kane, you're the second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing no discussion, I think we can take a vote by a show of hands. We are showing our support of MASC's resolution number four, social and emotional well-being. And that would be unanimous. Great, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Gallagher, how are we doing over there?
Almost ready.
We do have the packet, in our packet, we have a copy of the presentation. So while they're getting set up, just think of any questions or comments you may have. And I'm sure Mr. Gallagher can give us an answer. Great.
Now, I apologize, the expensive technology was not cooperative. So this is a split screen, and I can kind of go through kind of what we're at. So you'll have the slide ahead. So if you like to read ahead, you can read ahead. So I think one of the big aspects of the changes for us was trying to take in all this information. So we had a little cartoon in there and really condense it to, I think, for the home viewers and for the general public to kind of look at kind of what the assessment and accountability is and how it looks. So what I wanted to do is kind of talk about quickly, just the overview with the assessment and the accountability. As we all recall, in two thousand and two, right, No Child Left Behind Act was passed. And that was where, in two thousand and two, one hundred percent of all students throughout the country in ELA in math, by the year two thousand and fifteen, we're going to be proficient and/or advanced, right? We all remember that. And that's what happens when politicians sometimes make educational laws. And what started to happen in the early two thousands to the mid-two thousands is that's where the annual yearly progress was tied into funding. So you had to make a certain amount of gains, and then the federal government would provide the school districts with funding. What started to happen around two thousand and five, throughout the country, a lot of people weren't making, or a lot of districts were not making the annual yearly progress, which was set by the lawmakers. So in Massachusetts, we came up with a CPI, a composite performance index, which had multiple factors on student growth. And we utilized that data from two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten, where we thought it was going to be an equitable assessment for all districts. Started to notice is in some of districts across the Commonwealth, there was a big disparity with CPI in other districts. So a lot of schools were making the CPI, the annual yearly progress, but other school districts that were struggling, and maybe some of the urban schools, were not. So to kind of, the lawmakers got back together, and they looked at what's known as student growth percentile. So instead of comparing CPI district to district, they said, all right, let's look at the student growth percentiles. And they took the baseline data in two thousand and eleven for all districts. So that was the start. So if you did well in two thousand and eleven, they set your six-year target, all right, to measure your student growth. And that went throughout the Commonwealth. So the DESC set that six-year target based on student growth percentile to reach that six-year target for all different districts. So that's why when we start looking at, you know, some schools are level one, some are level two, how does that look? It's really on this student growth percentile. What a lot of the schools found out in two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen or fourteen is once you became a level-one district or school, it's hard to maintain that. Because once you start to close that achievement gap, they keep, they keep changing the target, right? So with, with that being said, two thousand and fifteen, the No Child Left Behind Act is now being replaced by every Student Succeeds Act, which is really focused on the college and readiness aspect and the twenty-first century learning. So that's going to come into play in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, which is actually, from listening to educators, from parents and students, is actually a better law because it's putting the focus less on standardized testing and more on preparing our students to be productive citizens in college and in the work field. So here, just, when you look at the law, it can be complex. It's a nice little slide. It kind of sums it up. So every Student Succeeds Act is going to hold students high to academic standards. That's part of our goal of developing those curriculum acts, developing the standards, and really working with teachers and support staff. Prepares all students for success in college and career readiness. That's the big push. Provides more kids access to high-quality preschool. We all know the earlier they begin to read and write and to do math, the better down the road. Guarantees steps in taking to help students in their schools improve. When we tie in to the, our strategic plan, you look at that social, emotional learning piece, developing the supports for all kids, reduces the burden of testing while maintaining the annual information for parents. So instead of pushing those standardized testing, it's a little, it's still going to be part of it, but there's more flexibility for districts and schools how to implement that testing. But the other, the other pushout is to communicate with parents and families more about the end district and student success. And the last piece that's really important, it promotes local innovation and investments that work. So bringing education back to the states and in the local districts to kind of figure out the issues that we have going on. Here's just some, just some more pieces of that. I won't read, you know, through it all, but it's just kind of really, when we look at the strategic plan, and this is what was so, I think, enticing for me to be part of this wonderful community, is that the forefront of like really thinking about college and career readiness. And I've heard the school committee in the past few weeks, we believe standardized testing is part of this and is important, but we're not going to hang our hat on just standardized testing. Let's look at some other data that's going to prepare our students for the twenty-first century. So as we look at that student growth percentile, right, because that's kind of what we're all taking a look at. So it's really looking, it's a little bit different from just achievement. Students can achieve at a low level but grow quickly. So they're looking at where the students are and after that year, how much growth that, you know, wherever they are to the end of the year. And each student's compared to their statewide academic peers. So there's, for Wilmington, it's a twelve cohort. Every school has a twelve cohort, similar schools, and that's how you get your comparisons. So it's different academic peer groups for each subject, grade, so the change is scaled scores. So that's kind of like how they, they put it all together. So the key factors, I think, for, for the audience and parents and everybody here is when you're looking at growth percentiles, you want to look at between the forty and the sixty, because that's moderate growth, right? Anything below a forty is low growth, and anything above a sixty is high growth. And as we go through some of the data in this slide, that's kind of what we're going to focus on, is the student growth. So when we look at just, we kind of compiled, I looked at the, you know, presentation last year. I think there was a, I really condensed it and tried to make it simple for every, not simple, but there's so much data to look at, to try to get a good focus and kind of understand. So if we look at the district achievement by subgroup, so that's when you, you look at the high needs, the non-high-need students with disabilities. So these are our subgroups. So we all were in, within that marginal of moderate to high growth for our subgroups, and I think that's a wonderful thing. We were up in ELA with our students with disabilities, our high-need students, and kind of right on the cusp for the students without high needs. But remember, once you start to achieve at a high level on that CPI, it's hard to show growth at that high level, right? So it's like being an A student and then getting to that hundred. If you're not there with those high achievers, it's hard to kind of display that growth. So there's other factors that get, you know, put into that. The math, very positive as a district. You know, a lot of growth. We're still in that moderate to high growth for, for all students in the subgroups, which is promising. And then when you're looking at the change, it's, you know, it's positive. For the proficient proficiency, on the other end, too, not only for just the subgroups, but as we look at our proficient and advanced students, once again, maintaining a high degree of success or actually climbing a high degree. So when we look at the Accountability and the Progress Performance Index, so it's really the, for all school districts, they give you a number of one to five, one being the highest, and five indicating that there needs to be assistance. You know, four or five is when the state starts to come into a school district and working with teachers and principals. All schools for which a PPI is your Progress and Performance Index, it's reported. So they classify, they put all of that information in. And so for every school district, if whatever school is the lowest, that's the entire district. So if you had a level-four school, but everyone else was level-one, the district would be a level-four. So for us, as we move forward, and you'll see some of our data, and it's, it's, it's pretty good. You know, a lot of, a lot of great things going on. So when we look at that calculation for the Woburn Street in the north intermediate, they were level-one. Shawshank West, Wilmington in high school, Wilmington Middle School is level-two. And I'll kind of go through some of the data to, to illustrate why. Try to go through this for you guys pretty quick. So if we look at the ELA, the district MCAS assessment, and we're tired to see it up there. But so the way we broke it down is, it's similar to some of the packets that you received. But we had all, all students grouped up top. So that's your aggregate, that's all students in the district, and how well they did over the two thousand and thirteen to sixteen. And then underneath, you have students, your subgroups, the students with disabilities, and then your students that are economically disadvantaged. So those are your two subgroups. It's a little difficult to see up there. But if you look at the highlighted area, if you go down to on those charts and you look at, it says N students, CPI, and median student growth percentile. I think that's really important as you go through this data. And as we get to the specific schools, you can see how it's illustrated a little bit more. So overall, for English, we made moderate growth throughout the entire district, which means all schools were in that forty to sixty percentile. When we talk about the individual schools, some schools made high growth for all subgroups and all students, and we'll show you that as we move forward. So Wilmington High School, we'll take a look at that. So if you look down at the, you have advanced proficient in the subgroup area, because that's kind of where we want to focus. And you look at N students, so that's the number of students. That's the raw number. And then you look at your CPI, CPI scores, which was part of the calculation. But then you look at that student growth percentile. So they provide all those numbers for you. What I think is really important is the raw numbers. So if you look at the students with disabilities, for example, in two thousand and sixteen, there was thirty-two students, right, that participated in the MCAS assessment. So when, when people, sometimes they see percentages, right? So if students with disabilities, you know, seven percent or eleven percent, a lot of times they're looking at, if there's a school of a thousand students and they see eleven percent, they're thinking hundreds of kids are not doing well. But the percentages are coming from those raw numbers. So if you have thirty-two students in that class with a learning disability, that's where those percentages are being crafted. And what that does, when you start to focus on those raw numbers in those students, then you focus on the interventions. You can start to look at, you know, the student schedule. You can see, are they getting the services? Are they a social-emotional student where they may need adjustment counselors? And for the administrators and the principals, that's kind of been the focus, is to really find those students that may be falling through the cracks a little bit, identify them early, and then start to work with them in there. So when we start to analyze our data here, it's kind of looking at those subgroups, it's kind of looking at those numbers, and it's kind of identifying those students. So that was Wilmington High School and just to, not to go through all those numbers, but all subgroups moderate to high growth. And actually, the socioeconomic students did better than, in their CPI than the aggregate. So that's a subgroup that actually outperformed the aggregate. For the middle school, grade eight, when you're looking at the median student growth percentile, once again, grade eight, they made moderate growth throughout. And then 83% of the students scored proficient towards advanced on, on the MCAS ELA. Grade seven, and I'll probably, we can put this presentation on the website too because it's hard to see here. But for grade seven, happy to report that all students made moderate growth and some of the students, for example, 68% scored high growth. And that was your economically disadvantaged students for grade seven. So there's a lot of success here when you're looking at the student growth percentiles. For grade six, this, they did not make, they didn't meet the moderate student growth percentile. But overall, the students for advanced and proficient was 84%. But this is a great data point because when you start to look at the students that did not meet, you know, you had 36 students, actually 30 students in 2016 economically disadvantaged. And then for students with learning disabilities, in that grade, you had 55. So you can look at those numbers of students and then you can start to look at individually their MCAS scores. And then once again, you start to analyze the programming, and Jen Mahan's behind me. But these are the conversations that are happening, you know, behind the scenes with principals, with teachers, with district leaders, and looking at the programming, you know, in, in one aspect. Or looking at, does the student need more support, especially the social-emotional piece? As we move forward, as you look at the West, Middle, the West Intermediate, you know, once again, happy to report, all students in all the subgroups made moderate growth throughout. 77% of the students scored proficient or advanced. And so, you know, the, the teachers and the students in, in that school are doing some, some wonderful work. As we go to the West, grade four, once again, moderate growth for all subgroups. And that's, when we say moderate growth, that's your aggregate, that's your students with learning disabilities. And then once again, your economically disadvantaged students. So they're all making moderate growth from year to year at the West. At the North, grade five for ELA. The North, once again, all students, moderate growth, all subgroups. 82% of the students scored proficient and advanced on the MCAS. Grade four, moderate growth once again for all students. And you had a high growth, the students in economically disadvantaged scoring above in the 60s with a 62 percentile. And if we look at the North, grade four, students with learning disabilities, they were at 59%, so one percentage point from high growth, which is pretty good. And then when you're looking at grade three, because that's really the baseline, so they don't have the median student growth percentile, so you focus on the CPI. So grade three Shawshene, they had 84.7 CPI overall. And then a 57% scored proficient and advanced. And then the Woburn Street, 88% CPI and a 61 student scoring proficient and advanced. And that's, that's grade three. So that's, that's pretty impressive. So that's kind of the summary of all of the ELA. And, you know, you guys would have loved this PowerPoint. I mean, it was beautiful. But you just have to believe me, I guess. But I really believe when, when you're looking at all of this, this data, I think it's really important to kind of get on the focus on, when you're looking at the subgroups, really focusing on the raw number of students in that class, right? And then you look at the scores because not all students are underperforming out of those subgroups. Some students are still scoring proficient and advanced. So if you have 30 students with learning disabilities, let's say in grade three, you're probably talking about a handful that need some extra supports. And I think sometimes for administrators in the district, you can get overwhelmed with all these numbers and all of this. But I, we've, I, I felt in my past experience, if you can focus it down, then you can really make an impact pretty quick. And, and I'm excited because I think the foundation of greatness has, has been laid. And it's just, you know, getting in there and just helping out a little bit more, so. I'm not sure if you have any questions on the ELA.
Mrs. Kane?
I'm just curious as to what, I, I've lost it somewhere, I've forgotten. To decide whether it's a level one or a level two school, is it based basically on what the disadvantaged and the?
It's, it's the overall, right. So if you, on the packet, I also gave for school committee, that's not part of the PowerPoint. It's like that detailed data summary. And you can see where if you met the target or progressed to the target. So they take all of those factors in. So it's not just necessarily the subgroup performance, it's kind of overall. So if your aggregate kind of slides down a little bit, that can have an impact. But when you're looking at, they take all the other factors, not just this, but like graduation rates, dropout rates. So they kind of pull all that together.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One other question could I ask?
Sure.
Do you ever look, do you look at for, for whatever you should be putting it to, the number of kids who go up and down between advanced and proficient? Like one year they're advanced, the next year they're back and forth?
Exactly. So it's not just, and I think it's a, it's a whole school approach, right? So it's not necessarily, we want to obviously focus on subgroups because that's kind of the, the, the piece. But we don't want to just focus on the subgroups. So it's, I think it's working with principals and, and district administrators, especially when we're pushing that 21st century learning, right? In that, you know, if you look at the standards, right, developing the standards, it's developing those high standards but really taking the academic piece and tying it into the real world. So students shouldn't have to ask, like, how does this, you know, why am I learning this? How does this fit in the real world? So I think that that's the shift also. So it's really, I think it's across the board of raising the bar of expectations for all students. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good question.
Sure.
So what were the changes from last year? I see that Woburn Street and Norwood Vita were level one. Were they level one last year?
No. So what ends up happening is if, and this is the, this is the tough piece, is maintaining that, that, that level one throughout the target, right? So when you make significant gains, right, in your subgroups, where you accumulate points, like up to 75 points per, you know, they do the calculations, then you become a level one school. But what, what ends up happening is that six-year target, once you, once you make that bar and that success, then they, they move it. So it's a, it's a constant movement. So it's hard to maintain a level one for like, you know, five or six years. And that's why I think that they're kind of looking at, I think, down the road with the new act. There's, there's probably going to be different criteria that they're going to start to measure. You know, like college acceptances, you know, all of those types of things.
So what were the changes from last year? Did, did the high school go from level one to level two?
Yep. So when you look at, let me just go back here. Let me just get to the high school. So when you look at the high school, so in 2015, let me just say I'm on the high school here. So 2015, the high school growth SGP for, yeah, actually, it was in, it wasn't in ELA. The high school went down because of the math scores. They dropped in math. The ELA, they maintained. So if you see, if you look at the SGP, they had a 58 for a subgroup for students with learning disabilities. And the year before, they were at 32. So they jumped in one year significantly. So they, they got a lot of points for that in the ELA. When we get to going from one to two, it happened in math. So you've got to maintain that, that growth throughout.
So is that what you're alluding to when they're at a one to stay, to maintain that level?
So what's hap, what's happened, and you probably have seen this, like, so a lot of, a lot of the high schools, like, you know, I don't want to name all that, but there are some high schools that have done very well. And they're level two because they've grown, they've, they've met the target of the student growth percentile. And they won't, they've stopped growing because they're doing so well. So that was one of the arguments for, for some of the school districts that are doing pretty well. You know, we're level two now and like some schools are now level one that aren't doing as well as us overall. So that's, they, they always go back to the commissioner and they, you know, that's why they keep changing how they're measuring. They're trying to provide equity for everybody and using the same measurements, but that's where they're running in. So some of your, your, your very successful districts are level two. And it's because of that growth piece.
And I know you weren't here last year, so I'm not trying to put you under that.
No, no, but, but when we look at the math for the high school, they, there were some areas that they didn't meet the target. If you look at your data, that detailed data report for every school that's in there, it will show you where they didn't meet the target. And in that, I think for, for everybody, I think that they, that is like, it gives you the whole, um, two pages. So you can see wherever it says did not meet target or progressing to meet target, they lose points for that. And when you make, you make gains, you get points on a 25-point scale. I hope that helps. Yes?
Mrs. Kane?
Do they still use if the students don't fill in an answer?
Yes.
It's more against them than if they put a wrong answer?
Yeah, they, I mean, I'm going to show you an example at the end of the presentation for the principals and district leaders. You can really look at all of the questions. You can individualize it and see the students. But for like an open response, for example, if you don't answer that, that's a zero. So when, when you start to look at that data, the first place that we used to take a look at was the open responses. So if you had an open response where 20 students decided not to answer it, that's a zero. And that zero hurts you a lot worse than a one. So we would go back to the students and to say, you didn't answer it, you know? And I asked my, my daughter in fourth grade, I'll never forget this, the poor elementary principals. Her MCAS scores weren't that, she's a fourth grader. And I said, you know, Em, she didn't, you didn't answer. She goes, I know. And I was like, why? I wanted to go to lunch. Fourth grader, that makes a lot of sense to me.
It was.
I, I let the principal know that, you know, let's maybe give her a snack or something to finish these off. But it's those little things when you start looking at the, there's some quick fixes and then there's some programming pieces that, that we've got to take a look at.
I heard some kids talking about it and which ones they didn't answer. And I was like, no, you have to answer.
That's right. Yeah, so those, you, you want them to answer and, and
Yeah, we have to emphasize that.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the ELA piece? All right. I think we can move on to math?
We are.
All right.
It's the same. It's pretty much, now that everyone, I think, has an understanding of what we're looking for, you look, you know, once again, you know, overall, let me go forward. So district-wide in math, in district-wide, in both ELA and in math, we made moderate growth to high growth in all categories. So, I mean, that's, that's a great baseline to work with. It's not, you know, as a district, I think there's some great work going on and you have some, I think, great principals and faculty and support staff. So once again, for math, when you look district-wide, you know, we made moderate to high growth in all categories. We'll jump right into the, the schools. And when we look at the high school, moderate growth and overall in both the subgroups and 88% of the students that scored advanced or proficient. So it's pretty good. When you look at the target, and if you wanted to look on the Wilmington High School and that detailed data report, you can see under math, they probably didn't meet some of the targets there. And that's why they went from a one to a two. When we look at grade eight, once again, and, you know, I have just one, one sentence for everyone. I don't want to keep you here for three and a half hours, so. But overall, for grade eight in math, we had some low to moderate growth and 58% students proficient and advanced. And getting to work with Lisa Ippolito in that Envisions math now is starting to work into the middle school. I think that's going to be very beneficial for, for the teachers and the students. When we look at grade seven, at the middle school, moderate growth for all subgroups. And I am glazing over some great successes, but when we talk to the faculty and the principals, especially students with learning disabilities and some of these areas of economically disadvantaged students, they're doing extremely well. Pockets of greatness there. And we definitely want to go out and really pat people on the back for, for their hard work. I think that's really, really important. Grade six for math, you know, once again, for grade six, moderate growth. 64% of students were proficient and advanced overall. And then once again, you just see the scores, you know, 58% for students with learning disabilities in grade six for math. So there were two points, two percentage points from the high-growth aspect. So some good work going on at the middle school. All right. As we look at the West for math, once again, high growth. For, for the West Middle, I mean, this is high growth for, for all areas. Really impressive for students with learning disabilities. They're at 60, 59.5%. And then 63% for the students socially economic disadvantaged. So great job. 67% scored proficient and advanced. As we move forward for grade four West, you know, once again, high growth. 67% scored proficient and advanced. And taking a look at the North, grade five, you know, once again, high growth. High to moderate growth in these different grade levels is, is pretty impressive, especially as the Envisions math program is being implemented. So it's just giving the teachers, I think, a lot more resources to work with their students. And then last but not least, grade four for the intermediate at the North, you know, high growth in those areas, 77% scored proficient and advanced. So pretty impressive for, for those schools, and all the schools, actually. As we look at grade three, once again, that's your baseline. So you look at the CPI for those students. So 76 was advanced or proficient. And then CPI of a 89.2 overall, which is pretty good. And then last but not least, there's the Woburn Street and their CPI was a 93.4. And then overall, advanced and proficient was 84%. And that's the whole district in a nutshell from that.
A lot of information there.
There, there is. There, there is.
Any, any questions or comments at this point? No? Okay.
All right. Okay, oh, there's my Woburn Street math. For science, remember, science isn't being tested in every grade. And because of that, you're not going to see the SGP because they want to follow it through. But once again, overall for science, you know, the CPI is something you, you take a look at. And I think, you know, overall, we're, we're doing pretty well. But remember, I think throughout the Commonwealth, the past, I want to say the five years, and I don't think Wilmington's any different. There's, there was a big focus on ELA in math at elementary and middle school, right? So if there was no foundation of science in, at the elementaries, and now they're just starting science in the middle school, and now they're being tested there. So that's why I think in the beginning, the next couple of years, those scores, you know, as we start implementing the curriculum down there and working with the students and teachers. So the, the scores are, they're, they're okay right now. But I think, you know, with the new science program that we're taking a look at and providing teachers with resources, once again, I think your science scores will go through the roof. So Wilmington High School, if you just look at the overall CPI, you know, you had six, seventy-nine percent scored advanced proficient, which I think is pretty good. Grade eight, you know, once again, I think the science program is being implemented. And you look at the CPI, you know, for the students, for example, economically disadvantage is at seventy-two, which is not a bad, which is above the state average, which was a fifty-six. And then, you know, we're above the state average in students with learning disabilities. We're a little bit above. So fifty point five CPI over the state, which was forty-nine point seven. And then grade five is the, the same thing. So the CPI, we're above the state average. And that's without having that science curriculum, which is now being implemented. And I think, again, that's the foundation for a lot of success. And then north, grade five, it's the same. So above the state average in our CPI in all the subgroups. And that, I think, is a great starting point as we start implementing the curriculum. That's, that's my little data-driven decisions. Do you have any questions on, on the science?
No, same questions?
No questions. All right, and I just kind of wanted to just sum up and just kind of show you, this is like a, this, I'm telling you, if this was on that screen, it would knock your socks off, all right? But anyways, so this is, if, if you look at up top, so here's a detailed data. And I gave you a sample. So this is nine questions, right? And, and you pull those out, which you, it's hard to see, I really apologize. But you would pull out those nine questions. And for example, question four and nine. So nine is an open response. And we had, everyone answered it, so that's great. But if you look at this, you had four students score to one on that open response. You had twenty-six score a two, which is like just about average. Fifty-six scored a three and fifteen scored a four, which is advanced. But this would be a, a data point that you'd want to say, all right, what, what happened with this open response? So the teachers and the administration can go in and they can look at the question, which is on the right, which ties into the standards. And then they can say, okay, you know, where did our students, what was the misconceptions, you know? You know, as, as you said, should our students have known that? Do we, you know, reteach that? And those are, I think, great conversations. If you look at the multiple choice, and I just pulled out the first nine. But if you looked at question four, which was multiple choice, and you go right across, so the correct answer was D. And we had five students chose A. You had nineteen students choose B, which is a, a big percentage. And then you have three students chose C, and then seventy-three chose the correct one. So, so that's, it was about, it was a reading passage. What is the most likely reason the author describes diverse attire of the players? So the B was to show how Fiona reacted to a variety of people at the match. So if you read that, you can see how a student, if they read a passage about a match, then they, they picked that wrong answer. So those are like the misconceptions that when you're talking to the data teams and you're talking as colleagues in professional learning communities, that's the in-depth aspects. You can also look at all of your students and where they went wrong too. So that's more of a detailed report that the teachers have access to with the administration. And that's with the work that goes on during department meetings. So, you know, one question is sometimes, so what, what are we doing collectively? And I just kind of put down a lot of the different initiatives that's really enriching your curriculum, that's enriching our best practices, twenty-first century learning. And that's why I, I always believe the foundation in Wilmington is here for, for greatness. And, and we're just going to keep working hard and focusing on student learning and, and take, working together to, to take us to the next level. This was my last slide. And it's, it's a great quote. It's called, you know, and Jim Collins wrote this, but it's good as the enemy of great. And it's really, it focuses on when things are going well and you're doing fine. That's where sometimes when you, you're pushing, some people say, well, and why are we changing? Or why are we trying to move forward? Because it's going to be best for kids. But that's, if you look at that, it's a business model. That's why we don't have great government principally because we have good government. Sometimes we don't have great schools principally because we have good schools. Few people attain great lives precisely because it's easy sell for the good life. The vast majority of companies never become great precisely because they become quite good. And that's kind of like the issue. So when, when, when you look at overall of a good district that we have here in Wilmington. And that's why I say the foundation of greatness is here. I'm, I'm really excited. I've had great opportunities to work with some wonderful people. And I think adversity can either separate people or pull people together. And I'm telling you, the last month, everyone's really rallied here. So it's an honor to present this data on behalf of the hard-working teachers and staff and the students and families. And, you know, I just think we're going to continue to move forward and great things are going to happen. So, and I appreciate the Plan B, the projector, and that's it.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gallagher?
I had one question.
Sure.
I am under the impression that the state was testing out a few possible questions for the future test.
Yep.
I'm not going to call it by any name because we don't know what it is.
We'll call it MCAS two point oh.
We'll call it MCAS two point oh. So I'm under the impression that they were testing out some questions in there. And if I recall my, my daughter's report, there was a line for those, those questions. Do we have any data on how Wilmington did?
On those specific questions?
Yeah, on those specific questions.
It's something that we can pull up, but they didn't like highlight that.
Okay.
I know when the park assessment came out at the same time, so all of a sudden, the, I mean, you know, the MCAS all of a sudden started to look a little bit like the park. And I remember we implemented for grade nine and eleven in my previous district, the park assessment. And there was the same year, we also did the MCAS.
Right.
And the students and the teachers were coming back. And they're like, these questions from the MCAS were a lot different than they've seen before.
Yeah.
And I think it's that competition of the testing. So I think it's going to be, the test that's coming out this year is going to be more park-like, where you're going to have to revise, you know, use evidence-based. But we'll see. And that's why they're not having, you know, the, the state's taking a hiatus of the student growth till we can kind of figure out what that test is going to look like.
Figure out what we're, what we're doing. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, appreciate your patience.
Good information, good information. Okay. Our next item of business, we've invited Mr. Mike Gilbert here from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to lead us in a discussion this evening on plans for an interim superintendent. And unfortunately, at this point, we really appreciate her, her wisdom and experience, but we have to ask Mrs. Kane to not participate in that discussion. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, thank you for joining us.
I'm happy to be here. So I, I guess the, I'll start off as I have some questions for you around what you're looking for and, and how we might approach this as we move forward in trying to find you an interim superintendent. I will tell you that I've had some contact with some folks who are interested. But I don't want to reveal any of that until I have an idea of where you want to go with this. Interim superintendents come in a variety of flavors today, so to speak. In that there are sometimes sitting administrators in districts who are willing to take a risk to be an interim for a period of time on the premise that if they do a good job, you might consider them for the permanent job. So that's one item I want you to sort of think about and, and talk about. And then we have some folks who are retired superintendents. The timing of this is such that most of the retired superintendents who are available and who have contacted me would be able to work without a state waiver because their retirement clock is on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year. So bringing somebody in now who, who might have worked as an interim somewhere else this year is only a very short period of time that they would, you know, work in the current calendar year. And then their clock would start again for the next calendar year. So if you were talking about somebody here for the rest of the school year while you find a permanent superintendent, then we don't need to go to the, to the issue of trying to accomplish a, a search before we could bring an interim in on a waiver. Because the only way you can get a waiver is on a failed search. So that's sort of where I'm at in terms of the conversations I've had with your chair. I, I want to gauge from you what it is that, that you want. And then we can talk about who might or might not be available.
I was just going to say that obviously, this is a priority for the school committee. I would say this is our, our big rock, so to speak, is to find a interim so that we can continue on with the business of our school district. Again, we are volunteers and it's been a, quite a stressful month or so. So I think we are looking forward to moving on. At the same time, we realize that this is a very big, important decision. And I'll, I'll certainly share that I'm a little nervous about it. I think my colleagues would, would say the same thing because we recognize the importance of the decision that we need to make.
Sure.
So that would be my first comment. But I would certainly open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Mr. Todd?
No, 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 I was pointing out the name.
Okay, you're pointing over there.
I, no, hang on. I appreciate you coming out. I appreciate the idea that you've got some people that have contacted you. I, I personally believe there's one person that could walk into this district. I think anybody that's on your list who's not served in this district previously is going to have a learning curve and we're coming up in budget season. I think there's one person that knows the district, knows the players, and could walk in and have a calming effect on the, on the, the staff. And I'm talking, I don't think it's anybody's, any secret. I'm talking about our prior superintendent, Joanne Benton. And if not inappropriate, I'd actually like to offer a motion that we reach out to Joanne for an important, we can discuss after.
I think we should discuss it a little bit more before we, I mean, I, I think there's a conversation we need to have as a, as a committee before we throw motions out there. I, I agree with you, she'd probably come in and do a great job. But I think we should talk about it before we, we do that. I mean, that's what this is for. I have some questions as well. I think that it is important that we get an interim superintendent in here. But at the same time, we need to look forward to putting a permanent superintendent. I have a quick question. Is there a limit or is it a, a time, certain amount of time that someone can be, have that interim title or role?
No. It, it's, it's for, for most of those individuals, if they're retired and taking their retirements, it's a matter of the amount of money they can earn and the, and the time they can put in under the retirement system. But for some who are not, who have, who have not taken their retirement, for example, they can work under the interim tag for as long as you wish.
So if we were to look at an interim, for example, to bring in here and see how they're doing, we don't necessarily, let me back up a little bit. If we were looking at an interim in a way of looking at them to not only be an interim, but possibly become a superintendent in the future, we wouldn't need to make them the permanent superintendent, let's say, for next year. They can continue with that interim role while we make that decision as far as how, you know, if the rest of this year isn't enough to know that. I mean, we went through a, a process, it's a long process to get a superintendent and, and obviously didn't work out as well as we wanted to. So I think we need to be very careful and take our time and do it right. I think Mr. Bjork makes a good point that someone can come in here and, and know exactly what needs to be done to, to get it moving, but we know that's not going to be the long term. So I think before we do that, I think we need to talk about, you know, what that long term is. I don't want to go through a process or I don't, I don't know if everyone feels different, but going through a process where we, we bring someone in, but then we have to go again searching for that superintendent for the long term, it could very well be that the right process could be getting someone in here as an interim that we can look at towards the future as well. Those are another options. And I don't mean to say, let's not, you know, vote. It could be the, the right option. I just want to make sure that we look at all the options before we start.
My, my, my only, my only concern, quite frankly, is if we, if we look at several different people for the interim position, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, we need to look at a permanent. But we're just about to enter the budgeting process. And how long is it going to take us to find, interview, and then appoint a superintendent that we don't know yet? And, and I, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I, and I agree with many of your points. I just think that if, if we can, if we can get the right person in here tonight, or make, or make the first moves tonight, I think that would be prudent for us to do.
And, and I agree, we're under the gun. But at the same time, I, I just feel that we need to make sure we're making the right decision, whichever way we go. And we look at what, every option we have and what's been talked about. And it very well could be that that's the, the, the right decision and the best way to go. I just feel that there may be other options and I want to hear them. And I wanted to make sure that, that we look, we, before we go down that road, and we may very well end up exactly there in twenty minutes or thirty minutes from now, or an hour from now. But I really like to listen and see what else.
Yeah, my, my motion, just so you know, wasn't to stifle conversation because once it's seconded, then you discuss. I wasn't, I wasn't looking to stop the conversation.
I apologize if I.
Mrs. Wallace?
So I have a question about what you were talking about, the limit. So is that for if a retired person comes in?
Right, so somebody who's, who's retired and taking their Massachusetts retirement can continue to work in Massachusetts public system. But they have limits on how much money they can earn and how much time they can actually work.
Okay, so that's my question. So let's say we did bring in a retired person. What are the limits? I mean, as far as time goes.
Well, it varies. It depends on what their salary was at the last position they held. So, you know, it, it may vary. But we'll, we'll look at that as, as we look at some of these folks. And I think it's also a matter of thinking about it from the perspective of, how long do you want that person to be here? The rest of the school year? Or are we looking at the school year plus? And we can always work some things out if it's, if it's, you know, going into the next year, to the next school year. I think, you know, at some point, you're going to have to make a decision about, do we want an experienced superintendent to move us through this next phase? Or do we want to take a risk and potentially bring in somebody as an interim who could become the permanent superintendent but might not have that experience? I think that's the, the first question you sort of need to answer is, which of those do we really want? Because that's going to eliminate at least one of the people that has. Because that's going to eliminate at least one of the people that has expressed an interest. I had a Wilmington resident who is an administrator in another district who expressed an interest, but he's never been a superintendent.
Was that person you were speaking about, someone that was one of our finalists last year?
I would rather not comment on that at this point.
And what are, like, how many people have reached out to you?
I've had four people reach out to me. The former superintendent, as I understand it from conversations I've had with your chair, has reached out or been reached out to by some folks in town and has not indicated that she was not interested. So, you know, that's obviously an option as well. Steve, you commented about, you know, that individual having had history in the district. I have somebody else also who has history in the district. How recently? How recently? He was, that individual was here from 1967 to 1986. Served as a teacher, as a principal, as a business administrator. Left here to become a superintendent in another district and has been very successful. Retired 10 years ago and has continued to do interims for that entire period of time and is currently working. Yeah.
And, okay, so I don't, maybe you can't tell me this, that's this, but for that person, let's say we use that one as an example.
I can tell you who that person is. That's Joe Connolly.
Okay. So when he has done this interim, these interims, has he been successful? Has it been more than a year?
I will tell you, he did one interim stint in a regional district in central Mass in Berlin-Boylston, where when he was finished, the town officials in Boylston asked him to serve as their interim town manager for a year, which he did. They were so impressed with the work that he did as an interim superintendent. And he's currently working in Brookline mentoring their new superintendent.
I think one of the challenges that we have as a group is that we really haven't had an opportunity to, you know, you asked the question, what does the group want? Do we want someone to come in as an interim or do we want someone to come in as an interim and work their way up? And I think that's where our challenge is. We don't know where we stand as a group because of open meeting laws, we haven't had an opportunity to really talk about it. And, you know, if the group felt that we want an interim to come in as soon as possible while we look for someone else, and I would have to agree with Steve, that that would probably be the right decision to make. I don't know where we stand as a group. Is that what we want or do we want to bring someone on as an interim to work their way through? And if we feel that that is the right person, then that is the person that we continue working with for a full-time superintendent. I don't know how the group, I mean, we haven't had an opportunity to speak, so.
Sure.
That's why we, you know, that's why I'm bringing up these issues.
A piece of this is, you know, somebody like a Joanne Benton or a Joe Connolly would not want to be your permanent superintendent.
Correct.
Yet, you know, I have another individual who is a former superintendent who is not retired, who is currently working but would like the interim position. He would take the interim position just as the interim position, but he also would probably be interested in continuing if you were interested in him continuing. That would be Joe Mastacola, who was a former superintendent in Pevody.
Okay, so someone like him, oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. That person would also be interested in the permanent position once it's posted, right?
Yeah.
And I would just, real quick, I remember Dr. Connolly.
Sure.
And I mean, I know him.
He remembers you too.
That's surprising because I did not go to the principal's office. He's a fantastic, I mean, he's fantastic. He's a great candidate. My only thought is just how recently Joanne has been in here as opposed to Dr. Connolly.
Sure, no, I agree.
That's my only, no disrespect to Dr. Connolly.
And I think that can be a double-edged sword too, so.
So, what was I going to say? So I was thinking, someone like that last person you mentioned, he's not really retired, so we wouldn't have that issue with the, what was?
With the retirement limit.
Yes, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion right now is I wouldn't even think about voting on anything or, you know, getting all the information, like Helman said earlier. Yeah, I'm not really comfortable with that. And, yeah, I think I'd like to get a lot more information, whether we go interim or long-term. I prefer long-term. But I don't know how long the process takes. You know, I've never been through this myself, so I don't know if it takes a month, two months, or, you know, you've got to get a committee and then the committee then submits three and then we make a decision. It's a process, yeah.
So let me just comment about the difference, okay? The interim process, first of all, school committee is the decision-maker here. And the school committee can decide regardless of what the community wishes. The committee can decide at any time what it wishes to do. So the committee could hire a permanent superintendent tomorrow if it so chose without any process. Would probably be foolhardy to do that, but you could. Interim processes generally is a matter of making the opening known and because of the way this occurred, it's well-known, which is why I've gotten phone calls. And then bringing three or four people in and interviewing them and making a decision. We would certainly provide some information to you about each candidate. We'd ask them for an updated resume, so you would have information. But it's a much shorter process. It can take a matter of a week or so. A full-blown search, however, is a different matter. That's a three or four-month process. And you're talking about a permanent superintendent who you would sign a contract with for up to likely between three and six years. So your commitment is different. You certainly want to take your time in making that decision.
So it wouldn't be just like a one-year commitment with a possibility of, I mean, considering what we just went through. You know, signing a six-year commitment with somebody is.
Well, I would say this, you wouldn't, you obviously wouldn't make a six-year commitment to a new superintendent, but a minimum of three years. I mean, nobody's going to sign a contract as a superintendent today for less than three years. An interim, certainly, but not a permanent superintendent.
Just for the record and also, Mr. Talbot, when we went through the process two years ago, it took us a full school year. We started in about this timeframe. We happened to use the services of MASC. After going through a selection process and reviewing various search firms, that took us a couple of weeks. We went through the next step of identifying a selection committee and we chose 13 people from the various aspects of the committee. If I remember correctly, they interviewed the semifinalist group of nine people. Right around that timeframe. We did narrow it down to three finalists and then we did site visits to their individual districts. They came and spent a day with us in Wilmington and we did interviews. And then it was a couple of weeks' worth of contract negotiations. It took us the full school year. I'm not making light of that or complaining, but that's, it is what it is. And I would not advocate for us to truncate that process. It's a huge decision. It's an important decision. Again, we are volunteers. We all worked on it last time. Of the seven of us, two of us could not participate last time, so there were five of us that were working on it. But it takes a lot of time. And I will say that, you know, heads up, everyone, as we go into this process, it's all hands on deck and it will require a lot of our time. Mr. Muesen and Mrs. Bonnich.
So I want to go back to a question I asked earlier. So hypothetically speaking, we bring someone on as an interim to finish out the rest of this year. We can still keep that person as an interim for next year?
Possibly. Depends on who the person is.
If the person agrees to it. If it's someone that perhaps we want to see what, how their performance is and they're willing to do that, that can be done, correct? Okay. And just for the record, I did have.
Let me just say this, though. I mean, I think there's going to come a point in time where that interim tag can get in the way politically.
Correct.
So just keep that in mind.
But based on the timing and what we have, you know, six months or whatever we've had left of the school year may not be enough to make a decision on that person if that is what they want to do, if they want to come in as an interim. So I guess, you know, we need to, as a group, figure out which way we want to go on that. And we did have someone reach out to us that was one of the finalists at the last process, who'd reached out to a few of us. And I know that person is interested in talking and coming in. Part of the challenge was this person did not have superintendent experience. I don't know if that's something that we can talk about, but it is someone that has gone through at least the first part of the process and made it to the three finalists. So again, it depends how we want to go. We haven't talked as a group, so these are the options that we have.
So I was just going to say, it's not, well, with the timing that Julie was just describing, if we did bring in a retired superintendent, then we would probably be looking at that person for more than the rest of this year because the process to get a new one is going to take longer than the rest of this year. Am I correct?
Potentially.
So, and then I'm going to go back to that limit of that money thing. So is that going to be an issue for us at the end of next year when there's a?
So let me say this. I think if you brought somebody in here in the next month for the rest of the school year, take a breath. We start in January for a permanent search. We could be finished by the end of the school year. Okay, so that's, it's doable. And it's not crunched, okay? Three to four months is what you need to actually do this, do a full-blown search. Part of it is when you start before January, you lose a whole bunch of time in November and December around holidays because people aren't paying attention and it's difficult. Yet going in January, the only thing you have to worry about is skipping vacation weeks in February and April and we move forward. So that's doable. But on the other hand, it may be smarter to sort of say, okay, let's see if we can get somebody who's willing to do a year and a half and we can really take a deep dive into what we really want in the next superintendent and move that forward. And that's going to depend on the availability of individuals to commit to that timeframe. I would just say that I think that it'd be extremely prudent for us to make, to start this process as soon as possible. I happen to know I saw that, I saw Paul's car here on Saturday. He's putting in a ton of hours and budget season is only just starting. I think we need to keep that in mind, that all of our leadership team is, and Sean certainly, is taking on a tremendous workload right now and it's not going to get any easier. So here's what I would recommend to you. I would recommend that you request that I reach out to Dr. Benton to see if she is available and willing to come in. And that you also may want to talk to Dr. Connolly, to Joe Mastacola, and possibly have one other individual who is interested, who is also retired. That would be Dr. Gary Murphy, who's a former superintendent at Triton Regional. And that, you know, you can take two or three of those or all of them and go through that. You can do that in, if you interviewed three people, you can do that in one night. And then take a breath and make a decision.
Is it possible to have an executive session for us to discuss the way we want to go as a group?
It is not.
It is not?
Is the committee willing to have, hold a special open session so that we can get moving on this before two weeks away?
Yeah.
I'm asking the chair, that's the appropriate way to do it.
So what you're recommending is basically getting an interim superintendent that's only going to be interim while we search for someone else?
I think that's a question you would ask each of those individuals about in terms of their availability for that length of time. And make your decision according to how you feel based on what they tell you about themselves and their availability. Can I offer my opinion on that?
Yeah.
So I think Manny and I make great counterpoint, point-counterpoint. But my, if we're looking for somebody who will be interim with the potential of permanency, I think that's a more stringent criteria that we're going to put on them. I think if we find somebody who's going to fill the gap for the time we need it and then concentrate on the permanent search, I personally just think that that makes more sense.
It does unless that interim person that we bring may be the best person to eventually become superintendent. We don't know that until we talk to that person.
Right, and you have some options.
So that's, and that's the reason why if we're going to go through this process, I think we should look at every single person that has reached out to you or reached out to us for at least a handful and not just keep our, you know, keep two or three that are retired.
I can tell you that the person who reached out to you is the same person who reached out to me.
And I think that person should be included in this group. That's what I'm trying to get at.
I think what we do need to do is, this is a commitment. And if we are to schedule another open meeting, which we would need to do to continue this process and bring however many candidates in we choose as an interim, we all do need to commit to being able to be here. So we'd have to maybe do a poll of everyone's schedules. But emphasis on the sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
But I think I'm hearing from the group that perhaps we do need a, someone to fill the seat and give us time to look for the permanent solution. Maybe they will be the permanent solution, maybe not. We don't know that. Is that fair? Is that what I am hearing? Okay.
So would you like me to provide you with resumes of the five people that we have?
I think that would be appropriate at this point.
All right, I will contact each of them to ensure that they are all available and willing to do that. I expect at least four of the five of them will be. And I will provide those resumes to you. They'll understand at that point that their names will be made public because all of this really has to go on in public. And then if you give me a date, then we can, and we probably want to, if the potential is there for five, we probably want to do it two, we probably want to do two nights. Or a Saturday so that you can deal with all five and make a decision.
A Saturday would be an option?
It would be.
Okay, questions? Other comments? Okay, then I think I'm hearing that that's what we, that we need to do at this point. So I will connect with my colleagues and we will get dates that we can get something on the calendar sooner rather than later and we'll get moving forward.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, would this next date be just us talking about it or having the candidates here?
We have to, they would have, I'm sorry, the candidates would be here for an interview, thereabouts. Because we would not be able to have another meeting for us to talk about it outside of public session. Am I correct in how I worded that?
You are correct.
Quick question. So in, last time we went through this process, we did meet in a private executive session. What is the difference between that?
The difference here is you were whittling down a, you were whittling, the search committee was whittling down the number of people.
No, we actually met before that to find out the process of how to go through the process of the search.
Not in an executive session you did, certainly not with me.
Was it a workshop?
Yeah.
And why wouldn't we or why couldn't we have some sort of a workshop just to take, just to go through the process of talking what we, you know, how we want to move forward?
You can do that, it's.
If you can do that, that's, that's up to you, but it, it would, it'd have to be an, it'd have to be an open, public meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think we're comfortable with, with our next step. I think that we would probably need to look at dates and sooner rather than later.
Yep.
And we do have one member who was not able to be here tonight due to vacation. So I believe she will be back in town this evening or tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
They have to do this very soon, right?
Yes.
Like in the next week?
Right. Yeah, very quickly.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the information. Okay, we've reached public comment. We actually have an audience this evening. Would anybody like to say a word or comment on agenda items? And if you could just state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
David Ragsdale, eighteen Marion Street. And I wanted to quickly comment on Mr. Gallagher's excellent MCAS presentation, which is kind of where I live. And I wanted to comment one. I wanted to comment one on that issue, especially at the high school of narrowing proficiency gaps with the level one, level two, and how hard it is to, to sustain that. When we talk about the proficiency gap, it really is literally like the gap between one hundred percent proficiency and wherever you are now. So the farther away you start in two thousand and eleven, the long, you know, the, the more room, you, the more running room you have to actually build up to that. At the high school, it's particularly difficult, because the high school proficiency rates are so hard to begin with. So Wilmington began in two thousand and eleven with, you know, ninety-one, ninety-two percent proficiency rates at high school. So you're talking about getting up to ninety-six percent, about having that gap consistently year after year for six years. And that's why it's so difficult to maintain it, because like the tiniest little students at the margins make the differences there. Uh, I also wanted to quickly comment on, um, the, whether the park questions, because you, because you asked a question about, about the park data. I would recommend that you use extreme caution in trying to interpret anything from the extra park questions, because everyone knew that they didn't count for this year. They were not part of MCAS data. And in Wilmington, not only, well, they didn't count anywhere, but Wilmington also administered the park session on a separate day. It was a third day of testing, so it was truly completely separate from all the MCAS testing. And so the teachers know it doesn't count. Really, the students probably knew it didn't matter. I'm sure they didn't feel very much pressure. Uh, I know that, you know, my own daughter kind of blew it off, and I think you're going to get minimal, minimal useful data from, from looking, from looking at that. So just, I would, I would advise caution in trying to draw conclusions from that. And lastly, just to kind of endorse what the committee's already doing for the superintendent search, I think it, it makes the most sense to get some kind, you know, someone in quickly for stable leadership, and, and then have the time necessary to try and find a, a permanent superintendent. And if the person who's in knocks everyone's socks off, then, then that's something that can be considered. But it's kind of hard when you're, in the meantime, looking long-term, to also be trying to evaluate the current superintendent potentially for that position. And I think trying to kind of, at least mentally, separate those two aspects of the task in front of us, in front of you, is probably the wisest thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Other reports? Do we have any other subcommittee reports this evening? No? I see nothing. Okay. Any correspondence?
No.
No? Okay. Future dates and agenda items are, well, we will need to schedule another meeting to talk about interim candidates. Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting would be October twenty-sixth, that's two weeks from today. I also want to make mention of the facilities master plan, the next meeting, where they're going to be discussing the school buildings. I believe that's October twentieth, and it's here in this building. Is that a seven o'clock start?
It's a six o'clock start.
It's a six o'clock start, okay. Thank you for that correction. I believe that's also open house here at the high school for incoming ninth graders.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the eighth graders. This year's the eighth graders, and that's a six-thirty start. Okay, and then our next meeting, our first meeting in November would be November ninth. Okay? And with that, I think we've reached the end of our agenda, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Any takers? Mr. Talbot, seconded by Mrs. Kane. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.